Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Verona Public Board of Education meeting. It's June 21st, 2022. The meeting is being called to order and it is 7:09. And if you'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reading of the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January 5th, 2021. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which was, which a resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VEA. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public and the press. Mr. Cruz, can you please do a roll call for attendance?
Thank you. Mr. Walker. Mr. Day.
Here.
This is Drappy. This is Prisco.
Here.
Mrs. Fresch.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you very much. And we are going to roll into presentations. We have a couple of presentations this evening, and first, we're going to have Dr. Fernari do the recognition of our 2022 retirees.
Thank you, Mrs. Freschky. This evening, we will be honoring several retirees, some of whom are with us this evening, and some couldn't make it, but we're going to honor them as well and present them with their certificates at a later point in time. So this evening, I have several of the administrators here who would like to say a few words about our present retirees. What I'll do is I'm going to come on down to the podium and make the presentation of certificates to the retirees who aren't with us this evening, and then I'll turn it over to our administrative team for the other two.
Thank you. All right, so we had a very remarkable number of retirees this year, and we discussed it and thought it would be wonderful if we were able to recognize those individuals who have provided so much wonderful input and care and joy and love to the students of Verona. So I'm going to read the certificates first for those who are not with us this evening, and these will go to them in the next day or two. I know I'm going to say this wrong because I just called her Joanie, but Joan Just Erbski is a wonderful art teacher who's retiring after 35 years of service to the district, and I know we're going to miss her quite a bit. And you know, I've only known these folks for a short period of time, and I'm getting all teario ready. Also, we have Maureen O'Neil, who spent 36 years with the Verona Public Schools, and we thank Maureen for all of her dedication to the district. A fixture over at HBW, Elaine Giszi, who spent 26 years of time with us. And for those of you that know Elaine, she's very energetic, and I know that that energy is going to be missed at the middle school. And also, Mr. Robert Cashel, who is a teacher here at the high school, and he's retiring from the Verona Public Schools after 16 years of dedicated service to the district. And finally, for those who are not here, Lisa Torsia, who spent time up at the high school. She's retiring from Verona after nine years of dedicated service. So these, again, these certificates will be presented to them separately. But right now, I have some of our administrators here who would like to come up and recognize a couple of our retirees, and the first is Linda Wagner. And so I'm going to ask Mrs. Venizia to come on up and to say a few words.
Good evening, everybody. I have the distinct honor of recognizing Mrs. Linda Wagner, who is sitting here behind me. Linda has served as a special education teacher in the district for 17 years. And as long as I have known Linda, she has worked at Lanning Avenue School as the Special Education Resource Center teacher. Just to give you a little bit of insight on what that takes to, you know, fulfill that role, Linda wears many, many hats as the resource teacher. She's an advisor. She advises many of our general education teachers on how to help the students, countless, countless conversations with them, whether it's in the hallway, on her lunch, or in meetings. She's a brainstormer. She's often asked to attend meetings as the special education specialist so that she can provide ideas and strategies for the students. She's a nurturer. She has nurtured and cared for so many students who have walked through her door. A tear wiper, we can't leave that out, all the tears that she's wiped from all the frustration and the students who are having a bad day, that's certainly a big hat she wears. And of course, most of all, teacher. I think the greatest gift that many of the elementary teachers get to feel in their life is teaching a student to read and write, and it really unlocks their accessibility to the world around them. And I was just speaking to this, to her at our end-of-year department meeting, to see the kids up here at the high school and being successful and thriving and knowing where they started when they were with Linda is truly priceless, and it's amazing to see. She really has done so much for the kids. And for those who don't know her, Linda is one of the most calm, kind, passionate people you will ever meet, and her classroom is truly a safe space. I see the students walk in there, and I know that they feel they can, you know, take risks and learn and things that they probably don't always get in the general education classroom. And again, that's priceless to give to the students. So I could go on and on, but having said all that, I'm going to wrap up with saying to Linda, "Thank you for all of your years and your hard work and dedication to the students of Verona. You have made a difference in the lives of so many children that have come through Lanning Avenue School. On behalf of myself and the entire Special Services Department, we wish you a fond farewell and a very happy retirement."
All the best to you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations on your retirement. Do it better than I do.
Okay, next, I'd like to ask Dr. Lanzo to come on up, and he will be speaking about Mr. Ken Carmet.
Putting the glasses on. It is with great pleasure to wish Mr. Ken Carmet much success in his retirement as he embarks on the next phase of his life. Mr. Carmet retired this past February. He served the past three years as the head custodian at FM Brown School, and prior to that, 20-plus years at the high school. Those who know Mr. Carmet, he has a great sense of humor, always smiling, always laughing. He's caring. He took much pride in his work at FM Brown. He worked through referendums. He worked through COVID cleaning. He always checked on the staff and the principal. Something very special about him is he always asked how we were doing. So you'd have a side conversation with him. A teacher would share something going on in their life, and he would always circle back in person or through a text. This past Sunday, I received the text from Mr. Carmet wishing me a Happy Father's Day. That's just the guy that he is, family-oriented, and he was a perfect fit at FM Brown as part of the FM Brown family. He has great instincts in his role and could easily anticipate the next step when completing his job responsibilities. One of the traditions at the elementary level for many years was milk delivery to all K-2 classes. Many students participated, and the kindergarten teachers had purchased him a special hat, and he was known to the students as the Milkman. And he was back to visit shortly after his retirement. He retired in February, was back in March. And we walked through the hallways. He visited each classroom, and students were very excited to see the Milkman. And when he walked into the classrooms, that's exactly what they called him, the Milkman, with much affection and respect. He brought smiles on a daily basis to the FM Brown community, and I just would like to share with him from the bottom of my FM Brown heart, congratulations, best wishes, and thank you again to Mr. Carmet.
I just wanted to ask everyone, on behalf of all of our retirees, just to think about all of the years of dedication and give them one more huge round of applause. Thank you, Dr. Fernari. Well, Dr. Fernari is coming back to the stage. I'm just, you know, to the two retirees who are in the audience, thank you so, so much. And to the ones that are listening, some I know personally from when I was a paraprofessional and I worked in the district. I know some as a parent, when my own sons came through, and I know some of you from my work on the board. And when people ask me about why I work on the board and, you know, what do I get out of it? And you, or what I get out of it, to sit here and, as a board member, a volunteer, and get to see front row firsthand, from top to bottom, sideways, diagonal, the work and dedication that our staff and our teachers and our administrators and our custodians bring to this district, it's unbelievable. So truly, thank you, thank you, thank you, and enjoy your retirement. Good for you. Awesome. So we do have more presentations tonight. So next up, we have Ms. Palmarese, and she is the Director of our Athletics and Special Programs, and she's going to give us the spring sports update.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to do a recap of our spring sports season. The Verona High School girls softball team completed the 2022 season with a record of eight and 14. This season, the JV played a modified schedule on days that the varsity did not have a game. This helped the younger players to grow and develop. Our JV squad won every game they played this season. This season, the varsity team was able to compete against some of the best teams in the state as they are in one of the toughest divisions in all of northern New Jersey. As a team, they were able to reach the quarterfinals of both the county and state tournament and compile victories against Group Three and Four schools. For softball, the American Division, Faith Reed and Jackie Loudon were second team. Sam Costigan and Gabby Agnezzo were honorable mention. 2022 is a transitional year for the VHS Boys Lacrosse Team. They finished the season with wins over Nutley and West Orange on senior night. In Liberty Division for Boys Lacrosse, Jack Friedman and Andrew Healy were second team. Harrison Sorge was honorable mention. In the All-League Division, Bianchi Division, Jack Friedman, James Haveron, PJ Shaw were second team all-league, and Andrew Healy was honorable mention. The Verona Boys and Girls Golf Team had another successful season. The team was competitive in the SEC Liberty Division, finishing with a 10-4 conference record and an 11-7 overall record. The team finished 10th in the county tournament and qualified for the state tournament for the ninth consecutive year. All-Liberty Division Golf, Nate Zimmer, Sean Buie, and Tyler Zamaney were second team. The Verona Hillbilly Baseball Team surprised many people with a 13-12 winning season, including strong wins over a powerful American Division team, Montclair, and equally impressive wins over Columbia and Barringer. For the second straight season, Verona won the rivalry game versus Cedar Grove. Sean Mulligan earned first-team All-Conference Liberty Division as a pitcher. Ben Mackey and Ryan Radigan were voted in with second-team honors. Mackey at first base and Radigan at catcher. Julian Santorelli and Chris Baker made honorable mention as outfielders. Girls Lacrosse had a banner season. Their final record was 14-6, and the girls recorded many milestones while beating multiple perennial Super Essex Conference teams. The second game of the season was against MKA, who at the time was a top-20 ranking in the NJ.com. The girls won and knocked them out of the top 20. Ella Moore scored her 100th career goal early on in the season. The Verona Girls Lacrosse Team went the farthest they have ever gone in both the SEC Tournament and the NJSIAA Tournament, losing in the North Jersey Group One semifinals. In addition to Ella Moore scoring her 100 points, Bridget Launzinger also hit three records, 200 career points, 100 career goals, and 100 career assists. For their American Division Girls Lacrosse, Ella Moore and Bridget Launzinger, first team. Megan Haughtney and Ava Keating, second team. Grace Madigan, honorable mention. Freedom East All-League, Ella Moore, Bridget Launzinger, Ava Keating, and Megan Haughtney, first team. Clara Nips, Grace Madigan, Brooke Reinaker, second team. Mary Kate Daughtry, honorable mention. The Girls Spring Track and Field Team had a dual-meat record of 7-2. They took second place in the Colonial Conference and had strong showings in both the county relays and state sectionals. Group Two qualifiers were Lauren Coburnick in the hurdles, Lauren Coburnick, Alana Holton, Lucia Grant, Sarah Notting in the four-by-four, Amy Griffin in the discus, and Eleanor Newman in pole vault. The four-by-100 team of Alana Holton, Lauren Coburnick, Sarah Notting, Malle O'Neal broke the school record. For track and field, the Colonial Division awards went to Lauren Coburnick, first team. Marguerite Valera, first team. Eleanor Battersby, Lauren Coburnick, second team. Sophia Basanti, Eleanor Newman, Alana Holton were second team, and Megan Gallagher was honorable mention. The Boys Tennis Team finished the season with an overall record of 6-14. All Colonial Division winners were Trevor Samaro at second team and Dermot Badman, honorable mention. The Boys Track and Field Team had a nice showing this spring. Sophomore Ian Zaluzki was second in the county in the 1600 meters, while Alec Hampson took fourth. The Boys Group Qualifiers were Ian Zaluzki in the 800, 1600, and 3200. Connor Robinson in the 400 hurdles, and Alec Hampson in pole vault. Boys Track and Field Colonial Division awards went to Ian Zaluzki, first team. Alec Hampson, first team. Connor Robinson, first team all-around. Noah Hayden, second team all-around, and Milo Atal, honorable mention. Here are also a few awards that were received after I presented the winter recap. Derek Bernardino was the recipient of the National Football Foundation and College Hall of Fame Scholar-Athlete Award. Evan Bannon and Sarah Bakikio were the recipients of the Essex County Scholar-Athlete Award. Evan is also a three-sport athlete, while Sarah plays two sports. Both are in the first decile of their class. Anna Lee Ying was the recipient of both the NJSIAA Scholar-Athlete Award and NJEA Scholar-Athlete Award, which was featured on News 12. Sean Mulligan received the Yogi Berra Best Teammate Award. Lastly, last night, we had our Senior Sports Boosters Award Ceremony. It was a beautiful night to recognize all of our senior student athletes. Our maroon-and-white winners were Sean Mulligan and Lauren Coburnick. And the 2022 Athletes of the Year were Kail Zabrowski, Grace Madigan, and Ella Moore. I'm so proud of all the accomplishments of our student athletes and teams this year, especially the accomplishments of our senior athletes.
Thank you, Ms. Palmarese. And again, it's just amazingly impressive of what our students are able to do academically. And as you mentioned, a lot of these students, not only were stellar athletes, they are academic high achievers as well. So it's incredible. Thank you so much for the report.
I want to do a quick shout-out to Mrs. Palmarese for the wonderful job that you've been doing this full year. But I know the feedback I've heard from parents and just seeing you at all the events, you're running around like crazy. I thought Mr. Merkler did a wonderful job running around like crazy, and I think you run around even more than he does, so, or did. So, but I want to thank you for everything you've been doing, and I know you attended a bunch of the ceremony last night and the other dinner we had with all the other different sports. And again, thank you for everything you're doing for the district.
And we have one last presentation this evening, and it's Dr. Moriello with a mental health update.
So this won't be a long presentation. It's really only a couple of slides, but I really wanted to celebrate the fact that we've completed our certification program for school mental wellness specialists in our district. You know, through partnering with Thrive during the 2021-22 school year, we were able to adequately train participants to meet the increase of student needs and staff needs encountered outside of the traditional school setting. The Verona School District proactively addressed this action step in the beginning of the school year through implementation of our coaching certification program and certifying our staff as mental wellness specialists. Each participant of the program received this certificate that is up on the screen. I'd just like to say their names only because they did go above and beyond what we tend to do within our normal school days in giving me time during the school day to meet their needs. And we have myself, we have Ms. Nicole Azadi, Dana Lustig, Catherine King, Lynn Scholz, Harry Warshaw, Kim Asmar, Joel Deray, Erica Tavaglion, Rachel Garcia, Brian Goldsman, Dr. Terry Shapiro, and Priya Basak. These participants worked diligently on a weekly basis in completing modulators and also for supervision. There was a total of nine and a half hours of modulators and assessments that were given so that we were able to talk about them in our supervision hours. We had weekly coaching hours, which equaled a total of 26 hours. In order for these participants to gain this certificate, they put out an extra 35 and a half hours during the school day to work together collaboratively throughout the whole district. This was a K-12 initiative. We had Director of Counselor, Director of Special Services. We had five school counselors, five social workers, and two psychologists take part in the program. You know, the topics that were talked about are topics that we're always wanting to talk about. It was just we had the opportunity, because of the certification program coming into play, to actually sit down and put the time aside. We talked about mental health interventions in the school setting, record-keeping, recording of data collections. We used the Columbia Suicide Society's vary rating scale, so we were able to find two of our skills in that across the district. Crisis intervention, understanding trauma-informed care, intervention of self-harm and self-injury, interventions of school refusal, and so on and so forth, as you can see through the following slides. One of the most engaging ones, I think, was the group and family techniques that we were learning from there, knowing how important in order to deal with our students was also deal with our families to help support them. Topics that were covered during our coaching sessions were school refusal behaviors and interventions, red flags, and how to document that. We talked about the Michigan shooting and how it affected students and how we can better support our students here that may be feeling a certain way around that. You know, it was nice to have these supervision moments in this week, this hour set aside every week to talk about what was just going on in the news and how it may be affecting our students too. Because sometimes, you know, as school counselors and case managers, we don't have that opportunity to do that so that we're delivering the same message to our students. And as you can see, there are other things that we talked about. Now, just to give you a little bit of the counselor feedback, you know, how have we been able to use what we've learned this year to help students succeed, support other staff members, and work with parents? You know, we've learned a variety of different tools that we were able to put into our toolbox on how to approach parents, how to deal with splitting of parents that may be in separate homes, and many different topics. You know, some of our takeaways, you know, this was a good refresher to remind ourselves that students and parents and staff have to work together in order to make true progress with students. The importance of adapting our mindset of empathy and avoiding judgment. I mean, I think that was something that many of the counselors, when they walked out of here, they learned a little bit more about how being more empathetic and understanding that, you know, families and students are on their journey, and we need to look at outside environmental things before we start looking in on the child and what may be going on in their life. Some of the biggest benefits personally was self-care-wise, social workers, psychologists, staff members, they want to sit and talk. You know, we had the opportunity to just sit back and talk about our interventions, our services that we have here, what's going on in their life, what's going on in their caseloads, and how we were all able to support together in regards to that. It's one of the reasons why our ESS program is so successful is because we have those weekly supervisions by us doing this as a tier-two intervention and getting our staff trained in regards to mental illness and how to deal with it. This was a nice step for us tier-two-wise also. And we also came big into how do we make sure that we're taking care of ourself while we're taking care of others? Because that's the most important thing, because we're not going to be able to help anybody if we're not taking care of ourselves first. So next steps, you know, our goal is to bring them back onboard next year. You know, right now, we are in the process of being considered a Thrive Mental Wellness accreditation for our school. By going through this accreditation, you know, we've met one of the final steps in order to get that accreditation. We already have parent supports. We already have parent presentations and those type of things. So with our tier support with mental health, most likely, we will get this accreditation. And moving forward, we will continue with Thrive to meet the needs of our counselors so that they can keep those certifications. We also have parent PD that we'll be putting out also to the parents and also staff PD that we'll be putting out to them, all in virtual modules so that they can access them at their leisure. But you know, that's part of making sure that we keep up with this accreditation. So you know, they mentioned to us with our scaffolding of programming that, you know, we're in consideration for being a school that will meet that accreditation. That's it. Thank you.
It's Dr. Moriello. So...
There we go. I was wondering why it was so small. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions or comments in regard?
I have just a quick question. So this Thrive School accreditation, what does, I mean, like, what does that get us after we become accredited, if you will, through Thrive? Like, what are next steps after that?
So our next steps is to maintain the accreditation and continue to now work toward training staff and trickling it down into staff and administration. So now with the next step, which is part of something that we budgeted for next year, we'll continue our supervision. That'll be more on a monthly basis. And then we will then have six hours of PD for our staff that is already accredited, that they would have to go through. Staff PD within the school district, so staff can take part in some of the modulators that will be showing on, showing teachers how to identify mental illness or kids who have anxiety or stress within their classrooms, and then a parent component of two hours of that, so.
The staff PD, is that voluntary, or is that going to be like a mandatory PD on one of the PD dates?
You know, we're going to roll it out as a voluntary program, but normally, what we tend to do is on that November PD day, we really make that a mental health day. That's usually when we bring in our mental health specialists and those type of things. So that's when we're going to, you know, shell that offer at during that time. It's a half-day PD. It'll give us two and a half hours, and then what we'll do is we'll offer the other two and a half hours as an opportunity, you know, throughout those other PDs if they have the opportunity to do it.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions, Dr. Moriello? If not, thank you, Dr. Moriello. And we are going to continue on our agenda, and next is Dr. Fernari with the superintendent report.
So first of all, I'd like to thank, this is Palmarese and Dr. Moriello for the presentations. You know, it is truly amazing how much gets done, and the surface of the water is calm, and underneath, there is a current moving that is just incredibly fast. the surface of the water is calm and underneath there is a current moving that is just incredibly fast. So and with rich results. So thank you both for your work. And to all of the administrative team, I'm going to make a few remarks as, you know, this is my last board meeting, but I just want to make sure that the the tremendous outpour of support that I received as interim superintendent was well worth coming out of retirement for for the for the eight months. Just wanted to make sure that I said that. So as I said, this is my last meeting with you, and I'd like to take this opportunity to say to say thank you to the board in particular. You have been incredibly supportive, very trusting of somebody you had not met before. And I really appreciate the confidence that you all put into everything that we've done together. So I really truly appreciate that the last eight months. I've had the opportunity to really come to appreciate Verona and its people, its children, its families, and the incredible staff and administrative team that we have here. There are so many things that we were able to accomplish this year or get jump started on this year. And, you know, as you move into your next superintendency and your next strategic planning stage, I really think you're well poised to do even more great things. So I appreciate the time that that I've had with you. Just as a reminder, I also want to say we should be receiving a report completed complete with recommendations from Grand River Solutions by the end of June. And I want to thank all those of you who participated in the data gathering and conversations that informed that expected report. The report will give the district a foundation for the next stage of work, and I congratulate you all for your dedication and persistence. Our goal to match our structure, procedures, and actions with our purpose, vision, and core values in order to create an environment of belonging for all students and for our entire school community can be attained. And I think that this information and the work that you've done so far is going to well position the district to make progress. So over the last couple of days, I've really been fortunate to have been able to attend some of the fourth grade farewells. Forrest Lanning and Effion Brown have had their farewell. I know, you know, thank you to the other administrative team members who were able to be there as well. I think that the kids and the staff and the parents really appreciate it when they see us in their environment. So that was really nice that we were all able to be there. Brookdale is tomorrow, and then on Thursday, believe it or not, we have a full day because we've got the middle school and high school graduations to to go through. And I just want to make sure that we all relish this special time for both our schools, the students and their families. And I'm really very, very honored and pleased to have been a part of all of that. I'm also happy to report that Mrs. D Giuseppe and I continue to make time for her transition to the district. And I know she's looking forward to joining the Verona team in July. I did have one announcement after our last board meeting, a few days later, be almost a week later, we received word from the Essex County School Boards Association at the county level now. They give an award that's called the Unsung Heroes Award. And I just want to read to you what what they sent to districts. It says, Dear Board President and Superintendent, sometimes heroes walk among us and we don't even know who they are. They can make outstanding contributions to their schools and communities, even though they're often overlooked under traditional student recognition guidelines. Unsung heroes make their school a better place because of their warm personality, their empathy, and concern for others. Each year, Essex County School Boards Association recognizes a senior from each high school in Essex County who inspired their fellow students as well as the staff in their schools. And now I am pleased to be able to share with you that the Essex County School Boards Association's unsung hero from the Verona senior class is Pierre Cadell Curran. So congratulations to Pierre. And that concludes my report for this evening. Board members, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Dr. Fernari. I just wanted to start off by recognizing it is your last meeting. And for us, thank you for trusting us. You didn't know us either. And I've said this before, that during the interview process, one of the things that stood out to me was when you said, if I get this job, you'll be getting a superintendent, not an interim that you're going to give 100%. And I think everybody sitting up on the stage agrees that you've given 110%. You stepped in after a very tumultuous time with a lot of turnover, and it was from my seat seamless. And, you know, your analogy of looking at still water with underneath everything paddling, I'm sure that was happening, but you've, you know, responded to five virtual strangers who bombarded you with emails and questions, took time to meet everybody in the district, our boards, our our staff, our administrators, and really bring together. It feels like you've been here forever. So you absolutely will be missed, and we have sincere appreciation of the time you've been putting in with Mr. D Giuseppe to have that transition and really ensure a very smooth passing of the baton. So thank you.
I'd like to make a comment now. Dr. Fernari, I I know when we interviewed you, you came in and you were the creme de la creme. When I when you think about getting interim, you always worry about can interim fit in, can the interim, you know, jump in there and understand what's going on with our district, and you went full force and meeting everybody as soon as possible, whether it's administration, the teachers, going to the schools, meeting with the town, meeting with council folks, meeting with EPW folks, the police. You went 100% and you were responsive to us, to, I think, the parents out there, the feedback I received. You were very transparent on things you were doing in the district. Your calm demeanor, you just have a way of putting everybody at ease. And I think during this time of a lot of things going on and people up and down, you brought everybody together. And it's what we needed as a district. And he, like Lisa said, you've been only here a short time, but you really brought so much value and and just almost say love to our district because you just really shined. And I, you know, having you leave and having Diane come in, I'm excited for Diane, but I'm sad to see you leave. And so it's been a special time, and I was glad we said yes to you. And and, you know, even though she wears purple a lot, and that's my favorite color, she's not wearing it tonight. But uh, that it was just, it was a special time having you as our interim superintendent. And I know you're gonna say you can retire again for the 10th time, and you'll be back somewhere else. But I'll be a recommendation for you, a reference or whatever you need. But again, thanks for helping to bring Mrs. D Giuseppe onboard too, and getting her ready to rock and roll and join. So thank you.
Dr. Fernari, I too want to thank you for all of your work for this district. Like Mrs. Freski said, that you connected a lot of dots that had become disconnected or were never connected, and I think created a cohesiveness within the district that has really sort of brought us all together. You have led with compassion and humanity and empathy and a student centered ideology. And thank you for sort of showing us where, you know, where we needed to go. And and, you know, I wish you the best for what comes next. I mean, won't be as good as Verona, but, you know, I guess something else got to come along sooner than later. And, you know, please don't be a stranger. Keep in touch.
Yes, I echo everyone's statements, and you will definitely be missed. And it's been a pleasure sitting up here with you and working with you. And, you know, like Mrs. Freski and every Mr. Day and Mrs. Strapi said that you just have this calming, very nurturing way about you. And it just that just really goes a long way with people. So thank you and wish you well. And like Mrs. Strapi said, don't be a stranger. Thank you.
So now we're going to continue on with our agenda. And next up, we have Mr. Cruz with the Business Administrators Report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So today I just wanted to open up with something different, not just on finance, but I wanted to promote our first Verona Wellness Day for all staff participating in our medical health insurance plans. This this event is going to take place on Friday, September 23rd, which is a professional development day for our staff, which the hours of eight and 1:00 PM in the learning comments. This will allow our staff to participate in biometric and registering in advance for biometric screening, cholesterol, blood pressure screening, nutrition consultation. And right now we're pending even free food shots. So as this event is actually slated to take place, we want to be, we want to promote the wellness and 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 the self care of our staff here in Verona. And this is something that we definitely want to continue having, not just for the fall of 2022, but ongoing for future years. As I close out the school year, I also want to thank our central office staff, our business team, especially for the heavy the heavy lift this year, their zeal and dedication in increased efficiencies for our school district. Additionally, I also want to thank our leadership. This is actually my last board meeting with Dr. Fernari. And it's a bittersweet as we transition forward. Reflecting back 10 months ago, I'm going to echo with Mrs. Freski actually shared. I remembered Dr. Fernari stated, if the board decides decides to hire me, you're not getting an interim soup. On day one, you're going to get a superintendent. And we did from November 9th to the present. I and I even think she hasn't even taken a sick day. She's been here. She's been here every single day since that day. She's been all in, and it's definitely an honor to lead besides you. So so thank you, Dr. Fernari. Lastly, I also want to thank the board. In case the public is not aware, these amazing talented individuals are all volunteers. And yes, volunteers. So I reflecting back in the year, I think, I think the the moment that we had a conversation in August after Dr. Dionysius shared his resignation, and I think I was only here for a month. I remember Mrs. Freshy, she was kind of like talking me into, hey, you don't need to, you know, everything is safe. Where, you know, leadership is okay. And 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 I remember reflecting back on that. And and I was like, I, this is actually what I thrive on. I love the adrenaline and challenge. So I think going back and knowing how dedicated the the board and 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 passionate you guys were about Verona and making sure that our our leadership actually always has the best and the brightest folks on the front line. So that's that's something that I see as a huge value. And 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 kudos to each of you for your time and for your dedication and for your passion, not just as residents of Verona, but just, you know, passionate, your passion for the school community. So the last thing is what I what I wanted to say is this year's was challenging and and you all proven to be relentless in ensuring that we had the best talented leadership to move Verona forward and upward to our next chapter. For that, I thank you, and I'm honored to be part of this amazing organization. So thank you.
Wow, didn't expect that. So thank you, Mr. Cruz, and congratulations on surviving your first year with us. And and I do remember that first conversation to you because, you know, you had a superintendent who hired you. And within four weeks, you know, tendered a resignation, and that doesn't instill the best of confidence for a new employee. So I'm very appreciative that you stuck with us, and we've had an extremely successful year. And going forward, we're going to have a lot of new faces, a lot of new leadership. And I think it's an awesome time that the foundation that was built here is solid, and it's upward onward and forward. I I'm excited. I'm excited what's what's coming next. So thank you very much. Next, we are going to roll into our committee reports. And the first one we had was community resources. Do you want to go with that? Oh, you weren't there. Oh, it was. Yeah, it was Mrs. Strapi, and she was in her car at the meeting. So I will, I will jump into that. And then if I leave stuff out, you can fill in. And let me go to community resources. Give me one second. Athletic committee. Community resources. So Dr. Fernari, Mrs. Strapi and myself met on June 16th. And Dr. Fernari touched on it in her superintendent's report that Grand River Solution is going to be looking at all their data and formulating their final report. And they should be giving us their report and recommendations by the end of the month. So I do want to, you know, thank our administrators and our folks out in the community from stakeholders who showed up to meetings in the evening, answered questions, surveys, and participated in that. So we're looking forward to getting those recommendations. I also had the opportunity to attend the curriculum council that Mr. Miller runs. And that's always an amazing meeting because there's so many of our educators and teachers on board. And what they talk about is the curriculum, what's happening, what's being written over the summer, any new programs that are coming in. And you really just get to be a fly on the wall and see how the sausage is made in the back room and what comes out the front and actually hits our students in the classroom. The the passion and the enthusiasm that these teachers have when they're presenting on their topics and what new courses are coming up. So thank you for always putting out an invite to me. I do appreciate attending that. Dr. Fernari also touched on our transition with Miss D Giuseppe. She has presented a hundred day plan. The whole board has had an opportunity to look at it, and it is a living document. So she made an outline and calendar of what she'd like to get accomplished in those first 100 days. And she's actually been in district already. She began to do walkthroughs in all our schools. She's met with principals. She's met with administrators. She's met some students. She's been in touch with me as well. She's really excited. So we're looking forward to having her onboard on July 1st officially. Also, the recruiting firm HYA and Dr. Brown, who was guiding our whole recruiting process, has been working with Miss D Giuseppe as well, working on the hundred day plan. And we do have, we're working on getting a date on a transition workshop, and that would be with the full board. And we will be able to go over and look at and set goals for what we need to be accomplished in that first year as well. I think that was pretty much it. Did I miss anything?
No, I think I think you hit everything. The only question that I had was regarding like superintendent goals. Because when you said, no, but when you said goals, that sort of triggered something else. Like, when normally we set those, right, those are set when we do the annual review.
So yeah, so so for her coming in, we'll look at the strategic plan because that's what drives our district goals. Right. So we'll do another reassessment because we have one more year left on that plan. And that'll drive the goals for the the coming year.
Okay.
And then we will begin to formulate the next five year plan. And then we as a board can set personal board goals that we want to accomplish as a board.
Right. But normally the superintendent has goals as well, right? That's what we use for the evaluation.
Evaluation. So that'll be discussed during the transition workshop with HYA.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, so then did facilities, buildings, and grounds meet?
We did. This was actually our second meeting this month because Mr. Naturel, our facilities director, wanted to bring. wanted to bring to our attention the a proposal, and it's actually resolution number, it's resolution number 11 on the addendum. And it's the approval of using Alpha Facilities Solutions Incorporated to help us. Essentially, the major goal of hiring this company is to create a long-term facilities plan through the inventorying and management, creating a management schedule as well for all of our facilities. Every single piece of equipment that is considered under our facilities. And what they'll do is they essentially barcode everything. It allows for Mr. Natural to sort of oversee the how the facilities are run, how they're maintained, what needs to be replaced, what needs to be renovated. It helps improve accountability for, you know, our amazing facilities team who work incredibly hard. It helps the management piece overall. It helps create long-term plans, short-term plans, prioritize facility needs over others. I think he was explaining that from a fiscal standpoint, it really helps him fine-tune the monetary control of his department and really helps him account for every single dollar spent towards facilities. And, you know, helps us plan for future referendums as needed as well. So that's really, that was really the main purpose of our meeting. We talked a little bit about School Dude, which is the software management piece of that. And they're moving over to something called Brightly. It's not much different. It's just like a really updated version of it. And then that last piece of the agenda talked about, I believe it's one, two, three, four, five, maybe eight, eight or nine must-dos this summer for the Facilities Department. The FM Brown Sidewalk, which has been a sort of running job, but that will be completed this summer. Room renovations, repairing of the front steps. We talked at length about the foul ball net for the softball field at the high school. We're still sort of going back and forth on that. We got the proposal. So I think that is a consideration as well. And then just sort of piecemeal stuff as well. And the last thing we talked about again was collaborating with the township on stormwater management pieces. I know he did meet with Mr. Melanero and began that discussion. I did encourage him to also reach out to the township, reach out to town council, the township manager, to really get the discussion going as we move into hurricane season and, you know, flooding happens. So, and that was it.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Drapi. Does anybody have any?
I think the only thing that that we didn't mention was the retaining Wall Forest Avenue, which was which was discussed. And it's, it's a bigger project than expected, so we're still doing analysis of the best way to proceed with that. So we're going to block that off and make sure people are aware that, you know, that the weak areas, there's one spot that we have blocked off. But we'll definitely be working to find a resolution for that situation sooner than later.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Does anybody have any questions in regard to Buildings and Grounds? If no, we are going to move on to Finance. A Finance meet?
Yes, I could go over the report, but Jorge just told us that he thrives on challenges. So here you go, bud. Can you walk us through the standard operating procedure and the energy audit and the banking RFP?
So one of the things that we have as a school district is the standard operating procedure manual, which is SOP, which also requires part of CUSAC when the state comes in to review. That document is about a hundred-page document that details every single process C that we have in place. When I first joined Verona, that was one of the first things that I asked for. And the interim BA, he gave me a document, and I started reading the document, and it had nothing to do with Verona. It just says Verona Board of Ed and standard operating procedures, but it was describing a total different school district than. So it sounded like that was just a compliance checklist. We have one on file. But here tonight, one of the resolutions is the drafted SOP, which this the team reviewed, updated, and we basically took a template that was provided by NJ ASBO, and it made it ours and really ensured that it reflected what processes that we had in place and basically the procedures that all of our staff members need to follow. Actually going to be shared with our staff tomorrow. The second piece on the part of the finance meeting was the the energy audit. So the Board of Public Utility provides the audit free of charge to school districts. That's something that Mr. Naturali and myself were submitting the application for is our first step to see what ESIPs we will qualify for. And the way that an ESIP works is that it's a zero cost to the taxpayer. Basically, the way that gets paid is through the, basically the savings that is created by that energy saving. So any energy savings that we're currently paying, for example, if where our utility expense is half a million dollars, and through an ESIP, we were to cut that in half, basically that savings will go towards making those payments for that energy upgrade. And that's kind of like the way that that the state has it, and it's basically a model that a lot of school districts have. We've done one here. I think the last one we did was 2016. So it's probably, yeah, it's a while back, and 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 we're still making those principal payments on that ESIP, which should be offloaded off our books. But yeah, it's been a while since the last time we've been, we've done one of those. So the energy audit will be the first thing that the first step that we'll do, and that will give us kind of like a real guidance on where the savings are, and especially since we've been talking about solar and sustainable energy. This is actually where we'll start with and and then see what's viable for us, and it'll give us the roadmap going forward. The banking RFP, I've been working with Jennifer Mascara at the Township. One of the thoughts, especially now with the Fed increasing interest rates, we go back and we look at our textbooks and interest rates don't look good. Feds are, the Fed is increasing the interest rates, but our bank is not. So it doesn't, it doesn't feel great, especially when you think about the millions of dollars that is sitting in the account, and we're not generating any interest revenue there. We did inquire about that. So it's kind of like we've just been hearing crickets. So I think now is the time to go out for an RFP on banking and seeing which bank provider, government banking, will provide us that. So we're probably going to do RFP in tandem because the municipal needs is a little different from the board. The municipal township has other needs, like armor pickup, yeah, and I guess the parking, the coins. And there's a, there's a bunch that Jen actually told me, and I was like, yeah, thank God, I don't have to deal with any of those. But but it's, we definitely are going to attack team on on going out and seeing what's the best, especially with the experience that we had the last time we did it in this area. And and I think that was it.
So you did a good job with that challenge. And if you want another challenge, it's as long as I'm on the finance committee from my end of it. If you want to do these reports for us, you did a much better job than I could have done. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the energy audit. How often do you suggest we do that? Because then, you know, for doing it now, we did that sixteen, that's six years. I mean, specifically like sustainable energies and things like that really do move very quickly. The technology was very quickly. So how often do you, do they suggest we do that?
So they don't allow us to do more than three years. So for us, we definitely have, you know, that that it's been over six years now.
Okay.
So so definitely it's time.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions? If not, we are going to continue down our agenda. And next, we have public comments on agenda action items. So if anybody has a comment on any of the resolutions that we'll be voting on, that would be that time. And I do not see anybody approaching the podium, so we will close that and move on to any discussion items. Does the board have any old or new business that they wanted to bring up?
Yeah, one question, I guess, is for the Ed Committee, Mr. Miller, Dr. Miller. When do you expect that we might see curriculum to, for us to review and potentially approve?
Sure. Good question. I think we're looking at the August 30th meeting. I met with quite a few teachers this week as well as supervisors. So everybody's pretty tired right now. Everybody's going to like recharge their batteries, but we're going to aim for the August 30th meeting. And just to let everyone know, all the curriculum that we update, it's live, and you can see the changes. I mean, it's probably not that exciting. It's like watching paint dry. But when we, when we, I've told everyone as we're updating, it'll be live. So you'll see some highlighted stuff being changed, and I, you know, it's there. Everyone has my email address. So if there's anything anybody's a question about, they can also email me as well. Okay?
Yeah. I have a discussion item for item 21.5 Resolution. It's Dr. Moriello. So I saved all my sappiness for Dr. Fenari. So that doctor got all the love. But I do want to say farewell to you. I mean, it was bittersweet to hear about your resignation. But it's also a great opportunity for you, so we want to wish you well. I also want to say it's been great working with you, what you've done with the Special Services Department, from where we were to where we are, your passion, your ability to get speakers and activities and that fair that you did recently and all the things that you've done to to bring us where we are. And again, end of the day, you really have passion for the students and for the the kids involved in all the programs that you work with. So I want to thank you for that. Good luck.
I'm going to piggyback on that, just in case you're not at our July 19th meeting. Because I know we have you until August 16th, but July is a while away. So everything that that Mr. Jim said, amazing. And I feel like I came on as a board member the same time you were hired in the district. So I feel like I got to to watch what you did for Verona right out of the gate, and it's been amazing. And like I said before, I feel like although there's going to be a lot of new faces across our administration and leadership team, you have helped put into place an incredibly strong foundation on which we can continue to build our house on. So much appreciation, and again, it's an honor to have worked for you, with you and watch it firsthand. Thank you so much.
I would like to take this time right now to thank all the faculty and staff in the district. I don't know about you, but it's been the hardest year of my life as a teacher. I don't know what it was about this year. I think it was just coming back from the brink of the abyss and having to pull it all together. And I want to congratulate you all on making it through the year and doing it with grace and integrity and working your tail off. And please know that it is deeply appreciated. Congrats to all the students for coming back from the abyss and really doing what you do best, which is making Verona look good. You know, I think we are, we are so lucky all to, you know, and a big thank you to the parents for your support throughout this year, you know, in all facets of education. So I just wanted to take the time to say that. Thank you. And also, congrats to Dr. Moriello on your next step. I really enjoyed working with you on Ed Committee. And I learned a lot from you, so thank you for that, and good luck.
Thank you, Mrs. Drapi, for those words also. And congratulations, Dr. Moriello. You will surely be missed. It's been a pleasure working beside you and learning from you and everything you've done for our mental health programs here and our wellness for our students and our staff is greatly appreciated. So you will be missed. Good luck to you and as well also to our staff members and all our teachers, administrators, Dr. Fenari, everyone involved. Thank you for this. This year has been tough on everyone, parents, students. But congratulations to all our graduates and good luck. Thank you, everybody. At this point, we're going to do a roll call on.
That for number 21.7, can we talk about the not voting on the DEI stipend positions until we get the the Grand River response back so that we can determine?
Okay, so Resolution 21.7 under stipends, we'd like to table the, for, to vote at a later date for the District Diversity Equity Inclusion. One, so it's one, two, three, four. The five stipends. There's five of them. So we're going to just hold those until we get the Grand River Solutions and have the recommendations and are able to evaluate the scope of work that that's going to be. So that'll come up at our next board meeting. And then also Resolution Number Three, which is the establishment of our committees. We did that our reorganization meeting in January, so I just think it doesn't need to be on here again. So we're going to omit Resolution Number Three. And with that, I need a motion to accept Resolutions Number One through Fifty with the omission of Number Three and tabling what we just discussed out of 21.7.
Removed.
Moved by Mrs. Drapi, second by Mr. Day.
Second.
Is there any discussion on any of the resolutions? Yep. There's a lot of them. We're good. Nobody has any discussion items. So, Mr. Cruz, can you please do the roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Day. Mrs. Drapi?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion moved on one through fifty, omitting Number Three, employing 21.7 by the I Stipends until next board meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. And we have addendum resolutions. I need a motion to approve Addenda Resolutions Number One through Twelve. Move by Mrs. Drapi.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Prisco. And is there any discussion on any of the addendum items? I just want to draw attention to under Facilities, Number Ten, where we're approving, back in May, a film company, a twenty-four movie filming, approached us and asked to use some of our facilities and grounds for a movie, a feature movie that's being filmed this summer. So, and it was interesting because they were looking at several high schools in the Essex County area, and one of the producers is a former VHS student. So we have an alumni who was part of it, and our name came up. They reached out to us. They did a walkthrough twice, and we were ultimately selected. So I think that's going to be an interesting and exciting thing to see our our school grounds in a movie. Yes. And, yeah, so I would say. And, yeah, so I would say in, in, yep. So they are paying us. It is not costing us money. So that's what we're approving. It's $10,000. They'll be paying us for the use of our buildings and the separate 1820 for the custodial costs for any overtime for our custodians. Correct. Is there any discussion on these? If not, Mr. Cruz, can you please do the roll call?
Sure. Mr. Walker? Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Rashi?
Yes.
Excellent. And then at this point, we will open up the podium to any public comments on any topics. And seeing that there are none, we will close public comments. And our next. Yeah, so that's what I was going to do. So our next meeting is Tuesday, July 9th. And 19th, oh my God. Tuesday, July 19th. And our confidential session is at 6:00 PM. Our public session is at 7:00 PM. And we are changing our location. We're reverting back to the Learning Commons in the high school. So July 19th at the Learning Commons. And that will be the first meeting with our new superintendent, Ms. Giuseppe. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Day, second by Mrs. Drappi. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourning the meeting. It is 8:21. Thank you, everybody, and have an awesome, awesome summer. And congratulations to our graduates, looking forward to Thursday night.